With that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Monson?
Aye.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Teneli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquas?
Aye, motion carries.
Before we move on, just a couple of notes on the consent agenda. That we did accept two donations there that we'd just like to make sure that we publicly acknowledge. So, we accepted a donation from the Sunshine Mexican Cafe Restaurant Food Truck. They partnered with us to do our, it was a bilingual parent advisory committee event here at MPC. And they shared a portion of the proceeds of that night with us, so that's what we were accepting right there. And then there was a donation from the Manuka Women's Club. Dr. Stott?
Yes, the Manuka Women's Club has contacted me earlier this spring to let me know that they had a sizable endowment that they wanted to give to education, so part of that endowment, they would like to give to us annually $4,000 a year for the next three years. They just want it to go towards education and towards kids. So, that's something that we'll be working on, how can we utilize that donation? But, we're very appreciative of that. In addition, they would also like to donate a tree to Manuka preschool here, or the Manuka Primary Center Playground as well. So, we're excited to work with them on both of those donations.
And a big congratulations to Mrs. Lori Shanholzer on again being appointed Recording Secretary to officially take the minutes for the board, so congrats there. Board, if we could slightly deviate from the agenda, Dr. Cezarek had jury duty this week in Chicago. So, she was down at the city courts and she is frantically trying to fight traffic to get back here to be a part of our strategic plan presentation. So, if it is all right with the board, if we could move to the action items and then come back when hopefully Dr. Cezarek fights through traffic and arrives. Otherwise, we are prepared to give the presentation without her, but she put a lot of hard work into that one, so. Any objections to that? All right, so our first action item for you is, and a couple of exciting items here meant to enhance security and functionality in our schools. So, Mr. Aaron Souza is going to present a recommendation to approve the Crisis Go Communication Management System.
One is Crisis Go and the other one is Rival Five. And what this is regarding is basically security, but at scale. When, we've been talking with building principals, the security team about our current practices and procedures. And one of the things that kind of became apparent is, while we have procedures and practices, some of it doesn't scale well. Kind of give you a quick hypothetical, you know, everyone understands what a fire drill likely looks like and sounds like. So, if you have a fire drill, everybody goes outside, they find their teacher, you kind of raise maybe a green card, red card if you have everyone. But, let's say you're missing one student, like Adam, maybe Adam was in the bathroom, he went to the nurse while the fire drill went off. Well, we need to notify everyone that we're looking for said student. We're looking for him, somebody finds him, how do you radio back or get communication back to notify that this student is safe? We have him. While we can do all that, you know, but when you're looking for one student, that's easy to do. But, if you have 20, 30, 40, 50 students at maybe the junior high, that becomes very difficult. So, we're not looking for students that are no longer here. Students that, you know, went home because they were feeling ill or they went to the dentist. Those kind of things, and that way we're looking for students that aren't even in the building anymore can become, you know, a real problem and a crisis kind of event. So, one of the thoughts here, if I can, here it goes. So, Crisis Go helps with four major things, is with real-time student accounting, which basically is teachers have like a roster on a smartphone or an iPad or a laptop. And as they, as you're, let's say, keeping with kind of the more mundane fire drill, you can check off the students are accounted for. And all that data then is getting funneled into a dashboard for administration, principals and others. So, then they can see who's accounted for, who's not. It's all real time and then it kind of dovetails into communication and reunification, which we'll talk about a little bit more in depth. And then it just simplifies a lot of the processes. So, for example, here's kind of a screenshot from a video they have where you can see as a teacher, you're going to mark all these students accounted for, if you're missing somebody. And then all this data coming in, some, let's say 50 teachers in the building, all this data comes into an administrative dashboard. So, as you can kind of see here, you can kind of see how many students are missing. So, we have maybe in this hypothetical, we have 20 students that are unaccounted for. Maybe they're in the halls, maybe they weren't in my class when the event happened. We don't know if they were in the bathroom, they went to the nurse, the counselor, or they just went home 20 minutes ago because of a dentist appointment or something. So, all this data funnels in to administration, they can see how many kids are we still need to identify and find and make sure they're safe. Also staff, you know, how many staff have kind of checked in that they're safe. So, all this data comes in real time. So, again, going back to that last example where we find Adam, well, let's say building principals kind of pick on Jason. Jason finds Adam, he checks off that I have Adam, he's accounted for. The numbers automatically update and everyone who's looking at the numbers, the teacher who had Adam is unaccounted for is now updated that we have him, he's safe, he's with teacher Jason. So, all that kind of just streamlines the entire finding and accounting for five, six thousand kids.
So, how do you know which kid has gone? I mean, is there something on their phone or is the teacher actually going out?
So, teachers are actually identifying, like in the fire drill example, like you line up behind me or something, they're saying like, Adam's here, Logan's here, Billy's here, Susan's here, and then it, so then it all tabulates.
So, it comes up on his?
So, yeah, so there's a, the heart of the program uses like a smartphone app that staff then will put on their phone. Now, you can also use an iPad or a laptop, but just a more practical, common solution would be that. So, that dovetails into increasing our two-way communication because, so, okay, I'm looking for a student. Where is the student? Or there's an event, like there's a gas leak, you know, in the 200 Hall. Well, you can get group messages out quickly and efficiently with this program and administration and others can have kind of side chats with their own kind of leadership panels on the same app. What this does is it really kind of unifies the communication app and our processes into one system instead of right now where it might be email, a mixture of email, text messages, group chat, and just a little bit of hodgepodge of everything, especially when, you know, everyone's kind of like heightened anxiety. So, this would streamline and just kind of bring everyone to the same platform and communication structure. Beyond that, the next thing that this Crisis Go app offers is a whole reunification like module, because that's a whole other thing. And I've asked Mr. Scott Lustig, our head of security, if you have any questions about how this works. But, basically what reunification is, if there is such a monumental crisis where students need to be reunified essentially with their parents and guardians, you need an actual kind of system in place to identify parents, to notify them where to go, where to pick up your student, to identify the student, to check off that they've, that yes, Billy is going home with mother Suzie. And then timestamps and audit trails, because there's a couple of things, and you can kind of see faintly from this picture, there's a whole audit log of how it kind of works. But, what you don't want is, so message goes out that come to the intermediate school to be reunified with your students. What you don't want is you reunify Billy with Suzie, the mom, but then the dad doesn't know that, so the dad's still driving and the grandma's still driving. Then you have all these other people coming to the building that we don't even need anymore because we've already unified that student is safe and with their parents or with one of their parents. So, one of the nice things is, and imagine if we had this kind of event. So, okay, you're good, you're, this is your mom, this is your mom, all the checks and balances. And then maybe grandma shows up 30 minutes later, where's Billy? Where's Billy looking at? Everyone's already forgotten that Billy's already been successfully picked up because it's this complete mayhem. So, this helps solve kind of that problem. Then lastly, in any type of kind of crisis event, I'm sure like Scott would agree that you want to keep things as simple as possible, simple, simple, simple. So, let's say like in this example, we're going to upload our maps of our building in here. So, if there's an event, like I'll just kind of keep it benign with like a gas leak, you can see with the red highlight, the principal can draw in the gas leak avoid here and get out of the building, go follow the path to a safe area. This way, you're not trying to kind of say, because like some of our buildings, for example, the room numbering schemes are a little not so logical. So, if you were to say there's a problem in front of room 109, I mean, a lot of staff would have to really think about where room 109 is because it kind of like rotates around weirdly. So, this simplifies all that, just here's the map, I know that's where it is, I'm going to hide out the other way. So, lastly, you may be thinking that, okay, you're going to buy this thing to hope to never use it. You know, fair question. So, I believe we're going to use it for a couple of different things. Number one, drills, you know, fire intruder tornado drills, again, all the accounting, the finding the students and making sure everyone's safe and staff, right? But, also there's another product or function is what they call Staff Assist. And what Staff Assist is essentially like if you think of a bank teller silent alarm button. So, let's say you're at Jones Elementary School and there's an incident where we need CPI, Crisis Intervention Assistance. Well, one option right now, for example, to begin on the intercom and say, we need CPI assistance in room 200. And then the entire building knows that there's something going on in room 200, it's a big distraction. And, you know, and everyone kind of asks then what's going on and learning kind of pauses for a little bit. And another example would be, I'd say at the junior high, same example, if you were to, if a staff member were to get on the intercom and say, there's a fight in the room in 300 Hall. Like, all learning would stop at the junior high for a little while as everyone tries to see who's fighting, what's going on. So, again, instead of announcing to the entire world, I can use this app to say, there's a fighting in this hallway and it goes to a pre-programmed group of administrators, counselors, social workers, whatever, to respond to an incident discreetly, not make a huge scene for the entire building. Why interrupt learning for everybody when six adults can go solve the issue or separate the issue? So, with that, we have, you know, it always comes down to cost, all right? So, year one cost and an estimated year two cost. And if you have any questions, I know Mr. Scott Lustig here, our head of security, or I could help with some of your questions. So, we'll take, any questions about the application?
One thing I wanted to point out too, is we deliberately took a one-year deal on this just to make sure that our schools did find it useful, did find it easy to use and that it wasn't way more overly cumbersome than we expected to. So, if this goes successfully, we expect to be bringing you a multi-year deal to continue this in the future, which would probably bring it below 18.5, I think, right?
Yeah, probably like 16.
So, that answers my first question. I was curious about the one-year deal aspect, since the first year is predominantly learning, training, working through it. So, it makes sense then, then you're looking at multi-year going forward after the first year.
There was a little concern of what if it wasn't so great once you actually have it? Don't sink a three-year deal now, right?
So, my second question is, the device it's utilized on, I've heard it's a teacher's cellphone or is it iPad?
Teacher's cellphone would be the most likely use case or, you know, at the end of the day, it's a website and there's apps. So, iPads or like your laptops, but just if you're talking about real crisis, he of the moment, the one thing you have probably on you is your cellphone.
And that's kind of what my follow-up is. I'm curious, as we work through the first year, one of the things I'd be interested in is what device is most reasonable in the sense that logistically hypothetically terrible thought, the cellphone has another use. Somebody may be using their cellphone separately than the app, right? So, to be able to use the app the most efficiently and have access to your cellphone, I'm just thinking, as we work through what works and what doesn't, is the iPad in a classroom a more reasonable solution than asking a teacher to have their own cellphone and then having it use multiple purposes?
It's a fair point.
If I could, yeah, the app itself, the alert, is similar to like an Amber Alert. So, it'll jump in and it'll actually take over your phone just to kind of, for that brief moment, to give you that notification.
Right, which is, I won't call it a concern, but I would call it a pre-concern that in whether it's weather or mechanical or fire, I think a teacher's cellphone may have more valuable application than just that moment. If they could have both going forward, I'm talking about. So, that's just something that popped into my head because if my phone has taken over ID the information on it, I can't also use it to make a phone call or answer a phone call.
So, like immediately, I get what you're saying, yes. If that alert, if an Amber Alert came over your phone like it does now, it sends that message right away in that beep, but then you're able to use the phone right after that. So, I think you'd still be able to use it, but yeah, if you could get an iPad as well, that probably would be beneficial to you.
And then lastly, and I'll let somebody else say something, I absolutely love the data aspect of it, being able to get the reports and see what's going on, not just know that that happened, but see what actually happened. I love that part of it.
Mr. Lustig, before you leave, have you used this before?
I have not used it yet, but I have colleagues that have and they all gave recommendations for this specific program. We've looked into several through Raptor and a couple of other programs and everybody seems to be going back to Crisis Go and saying that that's the one that you get the most bang for your buck.
And then what about a situation where we'd have like a sub-teacher in a classroom or somebody in, you know, charge that day who maybe isn't a regular employee?
They, that's a great question. They do have a mechanism for substitutes to be able to kind of find students. Right now, like out of the bag, it's mostly geared towards, I'm a sixth grade science teacher, here's my, I'm going to select my period three roster because in this hypothetical, this happened during period three and here's all this. But, you can, as an adult essentially in the system, you can then say, oh, well, hey Billy, get in my room because he's in the middle hallway, get in here. And then they can look up Billy and say, I have him, even though he's not my assigned student for this class period. So, there is a similar style mechanism for substitutes. We would obviously have to kind of work and train with them after we get the bulk of our staff going, that they can then chuck off students that are safe as well. But, yeah, they do have a slightly separate, different procedure, but they do account for substitutes essentially.
Question, for the other companies, you mentioned Raptor and there's a couple others. How did you go about evaluating them? Did you bring them in to interview them or was it a conference call, a Zoom call?
So, we looked at a couple of different vendors, basically Zoom calls. And we had different teams of different people looking at different solutions and then talking with current customers of the different vendors and Crisis Go. And it seemed like from an ease of use, from what we could see and just high remarks from the list of references we were given, that Crisis Go just seemed to kind of check all the boxes. There are other solutions, you know, some more expensive, some cheaper, but they seem to have either it's very complicated or difficult or just even more expensive than what we have. Or they wanted you to, you needed to buy the five other modules to get like what Crisis Go on it, you know. So, it seemed like this was kind of the Goldilocks type of solution out of the ones that we saw.
Mrs. Monson, go ahead.
Okay, I know I had some questions as far as the privacy concerns of having a teacher using their personal cellphone, personal device and having this app on it with our children's information on it. Because a personal cellphone could be subject to unauthorized access of student information, hacking, just the privacy. What assurances do we have that that's not going to happen?
So, the app itself, there isn't really a ton of student, like student information in there by default. You know, first name, last name, ID number and like their class roster. So, we're not, so even if there was like a big issue there, then there is, then there's the parent guardian kind of contact information. So, by default, teachers only have access to their assigned students. Like, they can't look up phone numbers of kids that they're not associated or already tied to. So, there is that. All the data is hosted with Crisis Go. The app just pulls data down when you open up the app to get the more, most recent roster, if you will. So, it's not really living on your phone necessarily, it's just pulling it down from their secure database. We will have a student data privacy agreement with them, like many other companies. And, you know, they take their security and they give a lot of different federated abilities to say, these staff members can see this data and these staff members can't see this data. So, we feel pretty confident that it won't be a huge risk there.
And they will have to come to an agreement with this for the SABHA, sorry, that's the acronym, Student Online Privacy and Protection Act, did I get it?
Yes.
Yeah. So, that's actually a much, a very strict privacy for technology law that was passed at the federal level, I think it was.
Illinois.
That was state, I'm sorry. So, yeah, the state has really beefed up the amount of protections and agreements that they force districts and other government agencies to enter into with third-party contractors when data is going to be shared electronically.
Yeah, so in a big, like, in a big emergency where it really is, you know, a big time emergency, then you can toggle where you can see people in your building essentially. So, there's, but it kind of helps provide the safety lock of anything else happening when there was an emergency. Again, like you'd only, well, hopefully never use it in a real emergency, right? And that's the, you know, one of the constraints with this. But, I do feel honestly that it would help us with just some of the, I need help, I don't want to cause a bigger alarm in the building kind of a thing.
Something for Mr. Lustig?
Yes.
You talked about colleagues of yours using it in other situations. So, do you have like a real-time, real-life or hypothetical like situation that you could share where this was used?
So, a moment that it was actually used, no, I do not have that. I just have.
So, are we just working on like a hypotheticals?
Correct, absolutely. Where they've worked with other companies and done the same type of research that we have and they narrowed it down the same way that we did.
What are we using today?
Combination of a lot of different solutions, but nothing really unified. This is where this thing will really kind of unify, you know, email, group chat, you know. And that's where the problem is, it works in our drills, but you see how it wouldn't scale well. And that's where we've kind of enlightened, like, well, we really need to kind of look at a scalable solution for what we have. Yeah, when you're a teacher and you have 25 kids all day at Walnut Trails, it's pretty easy to kind of notate, I have all of them or I'm missing one. But, when you rotate 175 kids a day, you know, at the junior high or intermediate, it's a much different animal of just keeping track of who's where. Any other questions?
Any other questions for either of them?
Just to comment, I'm happy to hear that we're working proactively at a solution, so that's good. Thank you for you and your team.
If there's no more questions, I need a motion to approve the Crisis Go Communication Management as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve Crisis Go Communication Management as presented.
And a roll call, please.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Teneli?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Monson?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquas?
Aye, motion carries.
The other action item we have for you tonight continues along the safety and security, but in the form of a phone system. So, it takes a little leap to correlate these two. So, Mr. Souza, Rival Five, please.
All right, so Rival Five is a company we've been looking at for a couple of years now. And quite honestly, it's more than just phones. And so, one of the things that we've been looking to do is, you know, we can make phones ring in a classroom. You know, right now, we currently do that, but how can we take it a step further? And that's where Rival Five kind of sets itself apart from like our current system and a lot of other ones out there. So, beyond just telephones, an easy, quick win is there's the capability to give staff members a smartphone application if they want to call home. And if you call home after hours or not from your desk phone, that the caller ID is masked essentially to the building numbers. You can call home, that's a big win for especially our related services folks. But, beyond, so, okay, voicemails, call transferring, all that stuff, okay, nothing too exciting there. But, where it gets exciting is with pre-recorded messages, 911, lights and pole stations. So, in the events of a crisis event, right now, for example, we'll say, you know, there's an intruder in the building kind of a thing. So, right now, likely set sequences would be front office, somebody says, there's an intruder in the building. So, they get on the intercom phone and they say, there's an intruder in the building. And then they call 911. And then maybe because you have team members or, sorry, students and staff may be outside for recess, maybe then send out like an email to say, hey, there's an intruder in the building. So, all those are four, five, six different steps. And so, one of the problem, you know, so that's obviously a problem because there's four or five steps to do. You got to remember that, somebody has to do that all. So, now with Rival Five, with the push of a button on like a secretary or administrator phone, you can shoot off a message, a pre-recorded message, so the intercom comes on and you're not in a high-anxiety alert message, you're not, whatever you're going to say because you're very tense or have high anxiety. It's a pre-recorded message that the principals can do ahead of time so the kids already understand and know their voice, right? It's kind of recommendation. Number two, it will then call, notify, you know, 911 dispatch automatically and then shoot off flashing lights. And you can couple that with pole stations. So, here is, this works, we'll see.
Accordingly, and in the meantime, you're hoping somebody's calling 911.
So, here's a staff member coming in. So, she pushes that and then the lights are going off. 911 dispatch is called, a group email, group text is going out to all the staff members. All of that's happening in seconds versus, could be minutes depending on where you're at in the building.
By the way, if you didn't know, that was Dr. Craig Ortiz, the superintendent of Morris High School, just down the road from us, so.
So, Scott and I went over to Manuka High School and we saw a demonstration over spring break where we did, you know, the pole station and we saw the lights go off. We saw the text messages fly around and the pre-recorded message and the flashing lights. So, all that kind of works almost instantly. We're currently, you know, it's a five or six-step process. Beyond that, what I really like about kind of Rival Five is it lays this foundation for other systems and improvements. So, one of the things that we could do fairly easily is we could then tie that notification and so the mass notification comes across the intercom system. And that's great. But, let's say picking on the campus over here, so there's an incident at the junior high. Wouldn't it be nice if we could alert the intermediate that, hey, there's an incident at the junior high? Like, this can all be like subsequently kind of programmed to then let them know automatically instead of like, oh, yeah, shouldn't we call, shouldn't we let somebody know at MIS that there's a problem here? The other thing is you can tie into our bus radio system to let the bus drivers know, hey, don't come to the junior high because there's a big incident and we have flashing lights and all that other stuff. So, there's a lot of, what this is, is kind of like a multi-year in a sense. It's a big increase initially over what we have, but then it lays this foundation for other enhancements such as notifying buses, you know, over the radio system, like, don't come here because, you know, X, Y, Z. With that, so, we've been, like I said, we've been, the tech department's been looking at Rival Five for a couple of years. We just, you know, didn't want to, we want to make sure that we had everything kind of figured out. It'd be a smooth transition. So, we, when we refreshed all of our classroom phones two, three years ago, we made sure that the classroom phones were compatible obviously with our current system, but then also with Rival Five. So, we're not going to buy 425 phones this summer, you know, as well. We already have phones that are compatible, that we just obviously have to reprogram them, you know, with their help. Rival Five will handle all of our like phone number transitions. So, like the main number for the district office, well then, like they're handling all that, which is nice. And, you know, obviously the cost, you know, is pretty steep the first year and then it comes down to our estimated year costs there. This, well, this one is a three-year agreement. It was going to be a five-year, but we kind of negotiated that down to three, but kept the rates the same, you know, just in case. But, telephone systems are pretty, you know, a big, a big thing to move. So, we did, I have talked to numerous other tech directors at other districts and they all seem to like, you know, Manuka High School, obviously, Morris High School, July 86, I think Shanahan just got them last year, Coal City. So, it's definitely, it's been proven. And that's been one of my hesitations the past couple of years, like, well, look at other people local to us on this. And it looks like they have and it looks like they're pretty successful. So, we'd like to, you know, get us out of the phone business, I guess, but really add a lot of security enhancements. So, the greatest thing about this that I'm finally now dovetailing to is Crisis Go and Rival Five have a partnership. So, when we do a panic alert from Crisis Go, it'll then kick off the Rival Five intercom system and the bells and the flashers. Or the flip side, if you do the bells, flashers from Rival Five, it'll then kick off in Crisis Go alert kind of sequence there. So, it's two separate systems, but they already have like agreements between each other and they're already compatible. So, we're not trying to kind of piece things together and hope they work. They're already kind of like partnered with each other. Separate companies, of course, but I think both solutions really kind of like give us the best of both worlds. There are other districts that they just do Crisis Go and other districts that just do Rival Five, and that's fine. But, this thing, this way, anywhere from, anyone from anywhere, you know, in the building or associated can cause, can signal a lockdown and get everyone notified as soon as possible and have, and then just upgrade our phones in general, so. With that, I'll.
So, this is for all?
District wide, yes.
And the whole security system for all the buildings?
Yeah, so they'll start with, I think like, I think the package is like one pole station per building and then like two or three flashing lights per building. And then all the kind of infrastructure, the wiring, behind the scenes for that and the programming for like intercoms. and the programming for like intercoms and stuff like that. And then just telephone services essentially that we already pay for, but.
So when you say one pole, there's, there's one, basically what we saw the thing?
Yeah, so one, so right now we would start with one per building and then we're looking to see, then the thought is, just like what Monocle High School did, is then the next year, they kind of strategically decided, we should put a pole station over here, put a pole station over here, you know, and that way it kind of steps you into.
One doesn't seem like.
Yeah, uh, I, um, I do, I do foresee us getting, you know, asking for more and, and getting more, um, pole stations going. Truthfully, part of it with just the, the summer is going to be, you know, fairly busy. So we just want to kind of get, get it all working, get people trained, get everyone working. And then we'll clearly be adding that, um, there's a, a grant that we are applying for, that we've already put additional pole stations for and lights and things like that. But we won't even hear a decision for until October, so, but.
In Shanahan, I don't know that we have a pole station or I just don't know where it is.
Yeah.
But we can do it right from our phone. I can call a whole code, whatever, or if I call 911, they told us that it would come right to our classroom, like it has it down to that. Is this the same?
Yeah, so when we call 911, um, it would say, you know, we currently have that right now with our current system. If you call 911, it would say like junior high room 100. One of the problems with our current phone system is you can't really test the 911 call without actually calling 911. So in the summer, one of our tasks is to call dispatch and say, hey, I'm going to call you 91, I'm going to call you guys about 30 times, so please don't yell at me. So we, we randomly pick like five rooms in every building, just call 911, make sure it lines up and the database is correct. The problem is when we discover problems, we have to loop through two different other vendors to fix our 911 location problems where this, like, we just call Rival Five and they fix it. They also give us the ability to call essentially like a test 911 call to let us know what the dispatch would receive without calling dispatch and disrupting them, you know, 50 times, you know, in the summer or whatever. So we will have that, we will have, it'll, it'll be better than what we have, although not, not, we already have the base, uh, model of that with the room identification essentially from an extension.
So you, you mentioned just a second ago, getting everybody trained. And, uh, that's the big, the big step here, right? Getting everybody trained and then comfortable with it, using it, what it is. And I think once we get there, I guess my question as a comment really is, I see us being the most prepared and safest possible that we can be when we get there. So I think it's wonderful and I want to give you guys a lot of credit for a lot of hard work ahead of you, I suppose.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? Okay.
Another one if no one else does, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was noticing, it is a large, fairly large increase from what we're paying for just phone systems now, correct? So we, I guess that's more of a question for Mrs. Robinson. We, we feel comfortable with how, how much of an increase that is.
Yes, and I will be presenting a draft budget, um, for next year and I've included it.
Any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve the Rival Five telephone system subscription as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mr. Schenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquist?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you to Aaron and our security team for, um, really advancing our schools and our preparation for emergency situations.
I was about to say the, the same thing and like the, the board and the people that have watched these meetings have seen all of the various tasks that Aaron Souza seems to be involved in, like programming bus cameras, helping transportation staff figure out some routines. And then he's demoing Crisis, you know, the apps and then phone systems. And, uh, there is no group in this district that, that Aaron Souza doesn't collaborate with, with his team. So, uh, sir, you're an incredible asset to us, so thank you very much. Uh, with. With the arrival of Dr. Cesarek from the, uh, the, the long trek from Chicago, uh, I would suggest we move back to our strategic plan update. Uh, and this, uh, in May was always the month that we had targeted to, uh, bring you, um, basically our academic data from the year. We've been going through the strategic plan, uh, we've, we've let the board know as it happens, hey, these assessments have happened and a, a brief little summary of, of what happened. But we've never truly brought you the benchmarking data like we have with some of the other, um, strategic goals. So, uh, Dr. Cesarek and I'm, I'm sure some other people may chime in on this as well, has put together this presentation, uh, because just last week did we finally close the window and get some data from the spring MAP assessments, uh, as well as some other reports that she had to pull in. So thank you for traveling at the speed of light and fighting, uh, Illinois traffic to, to be here for this. So floor is yours.
I apologize for being late this evening, uh, but thank you, uh, for having me. Yes, strategic goal number one, uh, is the backbone and the basis for everything that we do, the foundation of, uh, continuous improvement in student growth and achievement. And that's what everyone is striving for. And let me preface this by saying, uh, what I have noticed this year is that the teachers have worked tremendously hard, as well as the administrators and the students and the parents, all working together for a combined effort. We've come off of COVID, this is our first really, really normal school year. I think that people have put forth efforts that are beyond the norm. So our strategic goal number one is to demonstrate continuous improvement in student growth and achievement by furthering the curriculum vision for the district, by assuring that we have program and curriculum consistency and coherence, by utilizing best practices and technology to extend our learning opportunities within and beyond the classroom and to personalize learning to enable each student to be responsible and accountable for his or her learning results. Oh. Sorry. Now I'm there, thank you. Recently, I had the opportunity to speak with our N, NWEA MAP rep. We've been in communication throughout the year. After our winter testing in January, we found that our scores were not what we had anticipated or hoped that they would be. So at that time in January, we did get further reports from MAP that gave us very much more detailed information about how our students are doing and where the, the gaps are, if you will. The teachers utilized that information, working in their PLC teams with administrators and helping students to set goals at that time. What I learned just in the past week or so, that there, there was an NWEA leadership summit that was held in February, actually, that, um, had, uh, one of the focuses was on the progress of the state towards pandemic recovery. And I don't always want to go back to pandemic recovery because we know that there's going to be gaps from students missing out so much for so long. But the key findings for the state of Illinois as presented by NWEA, what they found overall in the state, that the fall '22 achievement gaps were shrinking in reading and math compared to spring of '22. What our rep told us, or told me, is that Illinois is late to the dip. That the trends across the country, uh, the districts were finding, uh, the dip last year, in the spring of last year. We in Illinois, many of us have been finding the dip this year. Achievement gaps bottomed out later in Illinois, indicating the harm continued to accumulate for longer and the start of rebounding was delayed. Recovery is a multi-year effort and will likely extend for several years. Improvements are smaller for the youngest and oldest cohorts. And students who were kindergartners when the pandemic started, which they're third graders now, they show the largest reading impact and least improvement. And when you think about it, our current third graders missed out on kindergarten, first grade and back last year for second grade, but those are the foundational years, K2, when they're setting the stage. So that's the findings from, um, NWEA as far as Illinois goes. And it kind of matches what we've been seeing this year.
We have a question, so why did, why was Illinois behind? Did they, did they have any data, why or anything?
I don't know if there's a, a definite answer on that, it's just they're noticing the trend because they, you know, gather data throughout the whole country and what they've noticed is the state of Illinois is a little behind.
And just a note, Dr. Cesarek's added some slides since this was uploaded into Board Doc, so what we have in here is going to be missing, we'll, we'll get that updated tomorrow morning when we, when we get back. So the screens are going to be your best bet to follow along.
This is very recent information from NWEA.
I have a question.
To us, anyway, sure.
Were other states slow to recover as well? Did they have a list of like, these states did well with the recovery and these did not?
I, I did not read that in the data that I received, um, at this time, but it's definitely a good question. I thought of that too, I wondered.
The way she described it to me from her, her, the conversation she had was that, that when they said Illinois' dip came later is that there were other states that use the NWA that saw this dip last year.
Yes.
Whereas we weren't seeing as much, uh, I mean, everybody saw, you know, a dip, uh, and the effect of, of that. But Illinois schools have been seeing, I'm like, the dip this year, uh, and been, you know, grappling with, we're back in school full time, where, you know, where is this dip coming from? So this was reassuring is not the right word, but at least it, it lets us know that it, it's not a Monocle 201 phenomenon, that there are other Illinois schools experiencing the same type of, uh, dip in their expected growth.
And that doesn't mean that every Illinois school is, but, um, that we are on that trend. This is a summary of the national trends. For continued rebounding, the achievement gaps continued to shrink in reading and math. The rebounding was nonlinear, particularly in reading, it didn't follow a straight line. Grade differences, again, third graders showed the largest, uh, gap as far as achievement and the least improvement. Eighth graders also showed small improvements. The timeline for recovery, the rebounding is still several years away, particularly for students in high poverty schools and students of color. This is the trend throughout the nation. This is directly from MAP. This is, uh, a timeline of projected recovery, um, for grade levels three through eight. And as you can see, the green is math and the red is reading. Third grade, it shows, you know, five plus years, um, as well as eighth grade. And then it's kind of a mix with the other grades. But you'll notice that, um, sixth grade is just about caught up with math and on its way for reading. And we see that trend in our results as well. But again, this is not true for every single student. Certainly, we're not going to hold off and say, oh, well, we won't see that back to normal for five years. We are going to continue the hard work that everyone's been doing to move that recovery along at a quicker pace.
So is, what's zero, is zero 2022 or 2021?
Last year, 2021. And then this year, 2223 would be the second year.
All right, so go, so three will be going into the 2324.
Yes. And that brings us to some of our data that I wanted to share with you tonight. Uh, this is our kindergarten Ames Web comparisons, uh, from fall to winter to spring. Students, uh, who take the Ames Web, they're assessed in early literacy, letter naming fluency, letter sound, word sounds fluency and phoneme segmentation. So we looked at the percentage of kindergarten students who were scoring in the average range, which is the 26 to 74th percentile, and students scoring in the, uh, above average range, the 75th to the 99th percentile. If you look, uh, at the area in the blue, those are our fall scores. You can see that from fall to winter, there was improvement, uh, in the average to above average. And then in the spring, you can see that the average dipped a little and the above average was the same.
This is, these are our kids.
These are our kids right here. So again, we're late to the dip. Typically, we see, you know, continuous improvement and larger percentages in the average to above average. Does anyone have any questions?
Do we know where we're at? I know during the COVID years, we had a lot of kindergartners coming in with no preschool or no schooling prior to the first day they come to kindergarten. Do you happen to know, and I apologize, I didn't send you this ahead, I just thought of it. But, um, do we happen to know if we're seeing an increase in kids coming in who have had any sort of schooling before kindergarten? Um, or just that'd be something I'd be curious to know as we look at data moving forward.
That's actually something that we've added to a kindergarten survey when parents register their children this year, so we can better plan for those children as well. But yes, we still are seeing many children not only not coming in with preschool experience, but we're still seeing a delay from early intervention, which is birth to three-year-old services. Students, children, birth to three years old, when they would typically get those early intervention services and screened for services prior to coming to us when they turn three, that's still not happening. So we're still seeing a big delay there and it's not, it's not like it's on behalf of the state or on behalf of the early intervention services, parents aren't bringing the children to the screenings. So that's something that we're going to continue to do more outreach and making sure that doctors are recommending for parents, that we're sending out more information about those screenings because we're still seeing a delay in children, not only for preschool, but also for early intervention. So we want, we want more parents to get them, their interventions earlier because then those delays are remediated a lot sooner as well and we don't see that delay continue.
So then on the kindergarten survey that sent out, if you, that flags a child who's had no interventions or no preschool or something, for further assessment by us, or what is that?
So not, not just for further assessment, so the early intervention is, um, one, like, kind of one avenue that we're looking at. We make, we, we do an outreach to doctors' offices and to daycare centers and say, hey, make sure that if you see delays or if you see concerns, please make sure that you refer parents to early intervention. So that way the children can get those birth to three-year-old services or they can come to us for a screener for preschool. But then when, when we're doing that survey, we're not necessarily looking to flag the children for screener, to add an additional screener, but we're looking at making sure that, you know, if we have 20 students in kindergarten that haven't had preschool experience, that we're evenly distributing them in, in our kindergarten classrooms. So that way the children can receive more support when they are in kindergarten. Or maybe, yes, we are going to check up on the, on them a little bit more, but it just helps us to be more knowledgeable at that kindergarten level and make sure that we're targeting them for services more. Yeah.
So pre-COVID, were there as many parents who weren't putting their kids into the zero, you know, birth to?
So we, we have seen a delay in the parents putting, since COVID started. So since that actually started, there, there was kind of like a, I guess you could say a trickle of effects. It started where the early intervention was not able to complete screenings. So then the children, when they came in to us at three, they were just automatically referred to the school district. So we weren't, they weren't receiving those birth to three services. So they were like an automatic referral just to us and we were the first providers for supports. And when I talk about early intervention, that's like speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, sometimes behavioral or what we call developmental therapy. But then we're still seeing not, not just that, they're, they're providing the therapies now, but parents still aren't bringing the kids in for the screenings or because they're seeing concerns. We're seeing them wait until the children are four or even five and then bring them, them to us for a screening or just wait until kindergarten. So we really want those kids to come in as early as possible, so we can help try to remediate any delays that we might have. Because we know the, the more we, um, target and really focus our interventions and focus minutes on serving those children, the better they're going to do in school long-term because we're able to remediate those delays at a younger age. Sorry.
You're good, thank you. Next, we're looking at the spring reading cohorts. So comparing spring scores over the course of years from 2019 to 2023, the current scores.
And now we're on the NWA MAP here, and this is like the average RIT score of each grade level.
Yes, and when we're looking at the cohorts, we're looking how students improved over the course of time. Yes. And when we're looking at the cohorts, we're looking how students improved over the course of time. For example, in the orange first grade in two thousand nineteen, we're tracking them down through, starting in twenty twenty-one, because we didn't test in twenty twenty. And so we went from one eighty-two point eight to twenty twenty-one, one ninety-nine point two to twenty twenty-two, two hundred point four. And then in twenty twenty-three recently, to eleven. So that's how we're looking at the cohorts here. So we're looking at the same group of students as they go through the grade levels, and we're looking for those scores to increase. Now, the, the column all the way to the right, the twenty twenty-three, if you glance down that column, those are our average RIT scores per grade level. The ones that are in blue are those that are at or above the mean. The ones that are in red are those that are below the mean. So as you can see, the scores from most recently, first through sixth grade, those average RIT scores were meeting in the mean or above. And the seventh and eighth grade were not, but they were a little lower, but not, not terribly below the mean. The mean is set by MAP. And looking at the norms from twenty twenty, that's another thing, the MAP norms are from twenty twenty. They'll be updating those norms in twenty twenty-five, but those are the norms that are used at this time.
Again, I'm not that smart. Basically, like the second grade in two thousand nineteen, that's the same student in twenty, okay, that's.
They were tested, but not, or they were someone.
Okay, they're, okay, so just follow the color grid down. Okay.
That's right. All the way down. So for the most part, we did see growth.
Yeah, there, there was growth.
It's, there's growth, but it's not the expected.
Last year, we had a couple of grade levels that were, that barely missed growth in the spring at the upper grade levels. But this year, every one of the grade levels grew over two thousand twenty-two in a fairly significant, you know, manner. The, the growth at the upper grade levels is always small. Like, whereas when they're in the younger grades, they may jump by twelve to twenty points of the, of a RIT score. That shrinks as they, they get into their intermediate and, and junior high school grade levels.
So when you say twenty points, is it twenty points over the four or five years?
For example, for example, look at this year's third grade of one ninety-seven point five. Last year, they were at one seventy-two point eight in second grade. The primary grades just.
So that's good.
Yes, they, they have the ability, but, and so that's above the mean. But twenty points may be like fifty-fifth percentile there.
Yeah, it's a, it's a logarithmic scale. It's not like a linear thing. So five points in kindergarten is not that great, but five points in eighth grade is a big jump.
Okay.
So just to go, before we go ahead, the, I think we've said before, I love the cohort, the strategy of the, the cohorts down, so we can see what you're at now versus last year. But to put that aside for the moment, like we were just talking about with the younger students, the first grade number is from twenty nineteen, the, the first grade group to the first grade group now, that's the biggest difference on the board, right? That's the, the youngest students that we have, and that's what we're talking about with not, not where we were at as far as starting out.
And this pans out to what Dr. Chazerek said in the beginning from the, the MAP data. If you look, our, what is it, our fourth, fifth and sixth grade are pretty much back to where they were in two thousand nineteen. Third grade is, is almost there as well. They said the, the, the gaps, the dip was affecting the youngest and the oldest students the most.
So, and the, the reason I bring that up outside of the cohorts is that, that's the group we're starting with now. That's the youngest students or the first graders, I should say, not the youngest. But that one seventy-four is now our students going forward, right? That, that'll be the first graders turned to second to third. So that number being that low is the beginning now of our students, right? So that's, that's my, that's what strikes me, I should say.
This is another way to look at the percentage of students meeting and exceeding. This is from fall in blue to spring. So when we look at that percentage of students, we can see that there is a trend here that they scored better in the fall with more students that were meeting and exceeding. Overall, sixth grade improved here. I think that's more of a saying that sixth grade children trend is kind of unannually, but.
And this, this is national. This is not.
This is just us.
That's alcohol, okay.
That's ours.
Yeah, use your microphone.
Are students given any type or offered an incentive for their spring scores to stay focused, to do what they need to do?
They, they set goals that they're, they're working on. They set the goals from fall to winter and then from winter to spring. Is that what you mean?
Yes.
This is projected growth.
Can you just use the microphone? Sorry, sorry.
Sorry. This is projected growth. And MAP sets a projected growth for students that they anticipate that they will achieve. If students do not achieve that set growth, then they're considered below. So if you can look here. The observed growth is the bar in the blue with purple color. The yellow here is what they were projected to achieve. So you can see that sixth grade did achieve. But, but our students, in some cases, their projected growth was, I don't want to say not achievable, but it was in some cases very high. And in many cases, students were very close within a point or two of, of hitting that mark. So that's just another way to look at the data, and that's our kids just from recently.
How does it work when a kid hits kind of the higher end of the MAP goal? Cause the test is progressive, correct? So it gets harder.
It gets harder.
As you answer correctly. So what happens for the, the group of kids that are meeting or exceeding? You know, do they get to the point they start getting tested outside of their, what they've been taught? Or is there a cap to that? Like, how does that work with MAP?
That, that may happen. You may have, because the, the test itself is dynamic. So it's not one set of questions that every single sixth grader takes. Based on how that sixth grader does, the test will continue to test the child and give them more difficult questions until they, what we call sealing out. So when they hit their ceiling or their threshold for how high they can test, that will help determine. So yes, they, they might see something on the test that they've never seen before. And that's okay, because that's going to continue to see how high can they go. But that projected growth, you will see the students that are in that eightieth percentile to the hundredth percentile, you'll see their projected growth might only be a couple of points. And that's still going to be really difficult for some of those students to master those couple of points, because it is giving them harder and harder content.
So it does change their goal if they're at that.
Oh, yes, yes.
That jump is expected to be less.
Yes. And that's what's wonderful about MAP, is that it takes a look at where is this child based on where they're at and what can we truly expect from them. So it's not like they set totally unrealistic scores for their growth scores, but some of them can be really challenging for children. And it, yeah, it, it is going to be challenging.
Next, we have the, the math cohorts from the spring. And again, you can track and look through and follow the growth from two thousand nineteen through twenty twenty-three. The far column on the right, again, those scores that are in blue, those are the, the students who are meeting at the median. And the ones in red are those that are not quite there yet.
So I have a question. When, when I look at this, it, it seems, and I know we've talked before, that the, the pandemic experience was very hard on math itself and from, from twenty nineteen through now. But it, it looks as if students are fight, fighting through it, fighting back. They're really making a lot of progress from twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two to now. So with that, well, a big dip or a wall from twenty nineteen to now, have you heard that the curriculum changes that we've been doing with math have kind of been positive? Are we, are we going well with that with these numbers? Cause it really looks like they're fighting back very strongly in the last eighteen months or two years.
I, I'd like to say yes, it's because we have new curriculum. But I, I think from research shows that it takes three to five years to really see and be able to pinpoint growth from a new curriculum or implementing a curriculum. We're pretty new on the curriculum. This is our second year with Eureka, but last year, not everyone taught Eureka. So this is our first full year of everyone teaching the same program.
I think to, to paraphrase that, it could be, and we hope that the curriculum is having an effect like this. But there's no way that we would feel confident in making such a claim that it's because of the curriculum.
Right. And, and my, my reason to bring it up is I think the, the old saying, do no harm, right? That, that to change curriculum as we're coming out of the mathematics problem through the, the pandemic was, I know it was a concern for some people. So it looks to me like whether it's curriculum or whether it's just good students and good teachers that we're, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking we're getting there, we're getting there in math, so that's positive.
I would say most of, most professionals would expect like, for many of the teachers started, you know, this math program last year, but this is the first full year of everybody. You'd expect another dip, and I don't want to keep talking about dips all night long. But, you know, normally there's a traditional J curve whenever you make such a systemic change with your instructional, you know, pedagogy. And, you know, this is actually very positive news for us in the middle of a, you know, not everything is where we want it to be, but it's, it's very positive that in the middle of implementing new curriculum, that we were still able to, to get back to many of the pre-pandemic levels.
I think you're saying it better than me, is that in addition to the, the coming out of the pandemic with the new curriculum, where, where we're getting there. So thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So I remember last year, the year before, I mean, talking about Eureka, and we had a couple of teachers in who were testing it, and it was very, it was received very positive. So this year, are all the teachers pretty much engaged with Eureka now? Or do you have some teachers who preferred, you know, not to have changed? I mean, that you know of?
I would say that Eureka was a pretty smooth transition.
That's a better way to.
Yeah, very smooth. I think that, you know, even for the first year for some folks this year, I really haven't heard about any bumps in the road, if you will. It's been pretty smooth.
So another question. So as we look at these scores, and if we had students that were, did well before, and then they're dipping now, I mean, do, do we identify them, A? And then if we do, are we working with them to say, okay, you know, three years ago, you were here, now you've gone down? I mean, is there any way we can identify them?
Yeah, so we're going to talk about that in, in just a few minutes. But definitely, I think there's been a lot of data review this year, definitely. And working with students to offer those supports when we know that they're missing something. This is the percent of students meeting and exceeding in math, and these are our students. This is from fall to spring. Give you a minute to look at that. The kindergarten is, right?
So again, it looks like the second, third, fourth, second through fifth grade is kind of, you got the dipage, but it seems like K through one and six to eight, it looks good, but it's still that.
Right. And again, what we're hearing is that students may be missing out on math facts, math, math fluency, that those are skills that, again, if they're third, fourth or fifth graders, that that would be a K two beginning for laying foundation for that. But yes, math facts is something that we've, we've heard throughout, that that is a focus for us. Yeah.
Sorry, I just, I didn't think to send this earlier, but are, are these trends like this similar to even pre-COVID for this district?
We typically would see more areas of growth.
More significant. So yes, we tend to see that the achievement might drop off a little bit at the later grade levels, but this, it's not nearly as significant as it has been more recently.
Yes, and I, I don't think any of our schools would want to see less kids meeting and exceeding in the spring than they do in the fall. So, you know, this is, you know, like I said, we are implementing new curriculum. So even though our scores are back to pre-pandemic levels, you know, you can see an effect just, you know, between the different categories of success on the test.
And again, those are the projected growths at each grade level and then the observed growth in math. Language usage, there were a couple of years that students weren't tested, twenty twenty and twenty-one. In twenty-one, we focused more on reading and math at that time. So we're, there's kind of a gap in there to compare. But overall, the scores from twenty twenty-three, most recently, the, each, in each area, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth, they were meeting the mean. And again, that's the projected growth and the actual observed growth in each grade. Here's our science cohort data. And again, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we don't have scores at that time. We might've had some students take the test in twenty-one, but it was a very minimal amount handful. So again, looking for trends and looking at our data from recently at fifth through eighth grade, you can see that the majority of students were meeting at the median. And they did show growth made within each cohort. Again, the observed growth and the grade level projections in science. Talking about supports in place. All areas where we provide support for teachers and for students, starting with our instructional coaches, offering support this year in all of the areas listed there. But professional development, actually working with teachers, modeling, lesson planning, providing co-teaching, book studies, and leading professional learning communities and providing instructional resources. So, you know, I think that the coaches have been a huge asset this year. And that will only continue, but that's a huge supportive, I believe, that we have in place for our teachers and for the students. MTSS, we have focused interventions based on individual student needs, based on the data. We have push-in academic support, consistent progress monitoring to make sure that students are continuing to grow, targeting achievement gaps and focusing on those foundational skills. Then also differentiated instruction using the assessment data to scaffold instruction, looking for students who may need additional support in the classroom, focusing on individual needs in small groups and providing individualized supports and extensions. So for students that may need to be challenged a little, also providing extension activities for them. Our continued next steps going forward into next year. Further analysis of MAP results with a focus on specific subject areas and standards, reviewing the assessment results and making data-informed adjustments to instruction, and reviewing our curriculum pacing and timeline of instructional units of study. For example, when we were looking, digging down into the data after the winter MAP, we know that geometry and fractions were part of the winter MAP. However, at most grade levels, they're, they had not received instruction yet in those areas. So it's going to be continuing to evaluate and assess our pacing with the curriculum and the timeline of our units of study. Teachers have been working very diff, very hard this year on curriculum mapping. So we will have those completed and, and shared and available.
And just a small correlating piece to this, too, is. Just a small correlating piece to this too is, outside of this discussion, we've also been, you know, talking about our advanced placement and like how kids get into like some of the advanced, either classes or, you know, the pacing and stuff like that. And what we kind of discovered during it is like, so we, we're trying to remove barriers of people, and we, we'd like to allow parents the opportunity to get their kids into those if they'd like to. But when they do that, they basically skip a grade level. You're basically jumping into the next grade level. And so we were like, we need to have something that catches up that grade level that's, you know, not necessarily there. We do have some bridge programs at the junior high, but if we're going to push this down into the lower levels, we don't want someone to skip fourth, fourth grade math. So we're, we're in the process of trying to work on and, and developing and implementing some optional bridge classes for the parents that want to do that, so.
Excuse me. Target student goal setting and individualized support, consistently monitor student progress toward their goals, focus on foundational skill development, which I mentioned the math facts. Also phonics skills, geography, and map skills are all areas that we know that we need some additional support in. It's when we did vertical articulation from grade to grade to grade, all the way up to high school, we heard about math facts. So that's an area that we'll be focusing on. Providing extension learning for students who are ready for advancement, maximize support staff at each grade level. We'll continue ongoing data collection and reflection, the MAP data three times a year, informal assessments, common formative and summative assessments as well. Structure the PLC time for teachers to focus on student growth through classroom assessment, analysis, and goals, goal setting. And moving forward, we were just talking about kindergarten. We've been having conversations about how we can better support our kindergarten teachers and our kindergarten students. As Dr. Staub mentioned, that many students are not coming in with any school background at all. So there's a lot of time spent at the beginning of the year allowing students to learn how to school, if you will, learning how to line up, learning how to, how to sit on the carpet and things like that. But we've also found that students are not coming with those ready to learn with background. And in many cases, there's some students that are maybe a little, having some difficulty regulating themselves. So we're looking at providing some additional SEL support for our kindergarten classes, targeting social, emotional, and behavioral areas during the first month to nine weeks of the school year, designing daily SEL activities, maximizing staff support at the beginning of the year, kind of all hands on deck, bringing staff in to help with those type of activities. So, did you want to mention something, Tiffany?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we know that children can't learn when their bodies aren't regulated to be able to learn. So our biggest focus at the beginning of the year with the kindergarten students are going to be to help them learn those behaviors. We often call them ready-to-learn behaviors. So learn how to sit in circle time, learn how to sit at a desk, learn how to work with a peer, learn how to learn, basically. So we need to teach a lot of those ready-to-learn behaviors that they would typically be learning in preschool. So that will be the goal through working specifically with the kindergarten teams and the elementary principals and helping them create lessons to help students learn those ready-to-learn behaviors. It, it's different when you used to have maybe one or two students that came in with no preschool experience, but when the majority of your class is coming in without that experience, it becomes very difficult to be able to teach them. So we need to first teach them how to learn, and then we can teach them how to learn.
Exactly. Another move forward, as Dr. Mon mentioned, our summer programming, adding additional bridge programs to prepare students for the next grade level and/or subject area, like an advanced class. And continuing on, moving forward with our instructional coaches, continuing to support teachers with teaching strategies, resources, and tools, and providing professional development that targets the curriculum engagement and improvement of instruction.
I think I should know this, but the summer programming is for all grades?
Yes, yeah, and I'll talk a little bit about that more when I do mine. But yeah, so the summer programming, the bridge program, it's going in to, starting with first grade, all the way through eighth grade.
You were just checking to make sure we knew that, thank you, that was nice.
Any other questions?
I really appreciate that, I think Adam mentioned this, being able to see each cohort through and also the comparison of like kindergarten in 2019 to kindergarten now. That's very helpful in kind of deciphering all the information. So thank you for that, please continue to bring that.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing your civic duty down in Chicago, on jury duty. All right, so, so now we will jump back down to discussion and information items. And Mrs. Robinson will give you an overview of the preliminary 2023, 2024 budget.
Hello. So it's really early, so this is just a brief overview of the budget. I will bring back in July an actual tentative budget, but I wanted to give you a look at it now, just because you're making decisions over the next couple of months. So just to start off, the breakdown of our revenues, there's basically three main pieces, the local, state, and federal. You can see from the pie chart that a little over half of our revenue comes from property taxes. And then the next biggest piece is the evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, and that's 25%. But these are just the, the breakdown and then what pieces fall into each category. So to look specifically at our budget, the assumptions I've made moving into this next year's budget, we already know our property tax, our 2022 levy, we already know that has been finalized. So we saw a 9.96% EAV increase. So the way that the tax collection works is we will receive all of those 2022 tax levy from Grundy County next year in next year's budget. We'll actually receive half of the 2022 levy from Will County and Kendall County over the next two months. So that's why the next bullet point says estimating 5% for the 2023 levy, and that's only Will and Kendall. Will and Kendall just start the whole process a little bit earlier than Grundy. So tax bills are just due earlier, they finalize everything earlier, and we receive, we start receiving taxes earlier. And then our TIF payments, the board has heard about our new TIF agreement and has approved that. So next year's budget is based on the new TIF agreement. I have, at this point, have not added any new state funding. So as of last year, we were still at tier one, we were at 71% of adequacy. The tier one range last year went up to 73%. But we've talked about before, that seems to slightly be moving each year when they come out, and that, we usually find out over the summer. So if over the summer I find out that we will be receiving any new evidence-based funding, which we have every reason to believe we will, then I will go ahead and add it to the budget.
To clarify and just expand on that a little bit, the, we will at least get the amount that she has shown there. That's, that's built into the EBF formula. Even if we flip into tier two, it simply reduces the amount of new money we get if we go into tier two. It doesn't take anything away. So tier one money, tier one school districts get the vast majority of the new money that they put into the EBF formula. Tier two still gets a good amount of money, but then tier threes and tier fours are where you see a much greater drop off in their, their share of any new money that the state puts into the budget.
And then all other revenues I've left flat. But even from the time that I did this presentation on Thursday, I think already we're starting to see our next year's grant allotments. So I will tweak those as they all start to come in. But for this presentation, everything's been held flat.
So do you see anything that possibly could go down? I mean, any?
Um, go down? No, I don't have any. I mean, it's possible, like I've heard that the state transportation reimbursement might be a little bit less than this year, but our expenses were up, so I don't see overall that being significant.
We never know about interest, but it's not a huge portion of our budget. And then CPPRT, we don't know if it's going to go to, sorry, corporate personal property replacement taxes. We'd never get an estimate of that until August, but things have been seeming as if we would at least maintain the level that we had this year.
Nothing significant. So expenditures, here's just the basic breakdown, this year-to-year always looks very similar. It had been slightly different in the years that we were getting ESR funding. There was a little bit higher percent of, oh no, that was federal, sorry, that, I'm thinking of revenue, I got off track, sorry, expenditures. This has always looked similar, benefits and salaries, benefits 16%, salaries 62%. We can, we're always right around 80% with benefits and salaries. And then the other pieces are just our supplies, services, and tuition and other. So for specifically our budget for next year, all of the new recommendations that have been brought to the board have been included in this next year's budget, the salaries per all of the agreements that we have approved and in place. Our health insurance, we've had some really good years on our plan. This year, we're looking to about break even. So I did a slight increase of 3%, which is pretty low for the health insurance industry. But we, we'll continue to monitor that over the next couple of months if I need to increase it anymore. All of the technology and bus leases have been included. And then basically all of the remaining smaller building budgets, everything else has been held flat. Our workers' compensation, unfortunately, we had a few larger claims this year, so we've already found out that that will go up.
So what kind of, I was going to ask you that, what kind, what happened? I mean.
We had, we had a fall that I can think of. Trying to think of what else, I think we had someone lifting something and pulled like a shoulder. I mean, just, just things that turned, things that turned into surgeries and time off of work. So I think we actually this year had two main falls, it doesn't take much to increase.
We had a loss ratio, I think it was like 33% over what we paid, so we were due.
And, but just also to think about it, when I look back, like during COVID, we weren't here for a bunch of the time. So we had like really low, so we, we've seen an increase, but we were at barely anything, so. And then just some larger projects. So I think I've already told the board, we are looking into a new sign at the campus on the main corner. So that has been included in this next year's budget, but we're still in very early stages of trying to figure out what will be great for that corner. And then obviously the big expense of the balance, we are starting to pay out the HVAC project at the junior high. There's a small payment on this month's board, and then we will see a payment in June, but then throughout the fall, we'll continue to pay off the remaining of, of that project. The board approved asphalt and seal coating, so that has been approved in this, in this budget. One thing I haven't mentioned to the board, we are going to get a new high jump pit at the junior high. So the pit is just not in great shape, so our athletic director is looking into purchasing a new pit. And then a new storage.
I was going to say that the board will be able to try out the high jump pit before we make any purchase, so.
And a new storage shed, I mean, that is basically one of the biggest problems. In previous years, the pit has been, it's, it's a great big, obviously, pit, and it has been brought over to a storage shed that's actually on this, in this location. So we're trying to find a storage shed that could, could have the pit so that we can get it on, and cover, cover it every winter. And then the district office, HVAC unit replacement, so this is something we started talking about and really just got put on the back burner for more important projects. But as we sit here in these board meetings and you hear the un events go on, and then you can't hear the person speaking, we are just going to continue to, it has been included in this year's budget to replace the large units and just obviously regulate the temperature in this building also, that's not currently happening. And then the Rival Five phone system that Erin spoke about earlier has been included, and then curriculum materials. So Dr. Cesaric has some piloting going on for next year in third and fourth grade social studies. So that has been included in the budget, if the pilot goes well by the end of the year, we would purchase that.
So did Erin say that we might get grants for the?
So Erin and Dr. Massey and myself have been working on a grant that we're unsure, it's due actually this week. We are unsure if we will get it, but we have tried to include years two and three of the cost. So that would help the budget if we get that, but otherwise.
This grant is called the COPS Grant, I'm forgetting what the acronym stands for, but it's based on like safety and security upgrades, and it could be a sizable amount of money. But it's, again, it doesn't close or we don't find anything out until the fall, yeah.
Yeah, it's due this week and then we find out in the fall. And obviously, if we get that, then we'll share with you all the details of everything that we've included in that. So the summary, I always try to use the same chart so the board can always follow, but really the breakdown from the top to the bottom again is the operating funds, which you can see in the column that says the second to the right, the revenues over expenditures. You can see that some of the individual funds are negative, but really that $385,000 is the number that we look at to see that the total operating budget is at a surplus of $385,000. And then the bottom is the funds that are non-operating, the capital project funds, there's a large deficit, and that is strictly due to the junior high project, which we all knew was going to happen. So it brings our total budget, that bottom number, we, we'll see a deficit this year, a large deficit. So really, in summary, again, operating surplus of 385, the overall deficit of 1.7 million. The operating funds, we are seeing, the fund balances are meeting the district policy, that we will have at least 25%. And then the things that I will continue to look at is, again, our new evidence-based funding as we get our grant allotments. And then if we see any enrollment changes, because as we saw any new enrollment, we'll bring more staff and benefits. So we'll continue to monitor that. And then just a brief timeline, you see we're here in May. I won't bring this budget back next month because we'll be approving the amended current year budget. So the next time you'll see this will really be at the July meeting, which is when it'll be an official tentative budget will be brought to you, and we'll set the budget hearing. And then that budget will be possibly approved at December, September 18th board meeting. So really early view, but if you have any questions or obviously.
And I was just going to say, and, you know, we still plan to meet with our new board members just to kind of do some District 101 type, you know, things. Mrs. Robinson can produce the line item detail for any one of the funds or, or accounts that make up this. We can tell you exactly what's budgeted there and why. So the, over the, the summer, she will be giving reams of data to the board for you to review, you know, if you are interested in seeing the line item level. But there's really no final action to take on this for another, what, four months?
Right.
More for Dr. Mon, do we have a guestimate for attendance for next year? If we're going to hold study, I mean, did you have any?
We, we have no reason to believe that our enrollments will not continue to grow. Like, that's about all I can say, because early bird registration closes today if anyone is out there in the universe. But still, we, we again, just saw really low numbers of people registering by May 15th. It's just a culture in our community that over the summer, they will trickle in. And, yeah, the board has seen it many times, where in August, we suddenly realize we have a class size, we have a kindergarten class size that just got up to 26 throughout the building, we need to add a teacher. And, you know, we don't even start seeing those numbers normally until July. In a rare case, it may be June where we can say, okay, we're going to at least get six more kids over the next, you know, month and a half, so we might as well add a teacher, or, you know, now. But we, I think we were still under 200 or 300 new students overall, and that includes kindergarten. So it's just, it's just low numbers of people registering. Houses are still being built, like you can drive around the communities, and it's nothing like it was back in the, the boom days, but they're still, they're still digging basements, so.
We'll, we'll increase it.
I do, I do believe that, yeah, just based on the new housing coming in.
Thank you.
All right, that was all we had for discussion and info, are there any topics the board wants us to look into to bring back?
Just a few reminders for me, for board members, if you haven't sent me what committees you're interested in, please do that this week, and we'll, we'll get those situated. And then our two new board members, you can talk with Lori, send her some dates, and we'll get you guys in to let you ask questions and get it, just a ton of information on board meetings, district policy, and who's who, and any questions we can answer for you.
All right, moving into administrative reports, in just a moment, I'll call up some of the, the admin team to, to talk through the department. But just for the new board members and for, for anyone that watches the link, there's a great amount of information posted into Board Docs in the public content area. Each of the schools submits a monthly report where you can see the things that. Each of the schools submits a monthly report where you can see the things that are going on specifically in their buildings. Many of our departments or initiatives will have their own report there. We have an exciting library grant report there this month, always, always exciting to get that. But there's just a, a great deal of information that would just be too time-consuming to go over each one of these at the meeting. So we do post written reports there. So with that, Ms. Robinson, do you have anything else? Ms. Massey, Dr. Massey, what am I doing? Dr. Massey.
Do this, there I am, hi. Good evening. Couple of things for you guys. I know in March, I believe it was, I came forward with a staffing recommendation. There was a phase one and a phase two of that, and one of the questions that was posed that evening was, do you think you're gonna be able to fill all these jobs? I think Mr. Cronin was my guy on that one. So I wanted to come back at you with some numbers. We have not yet posted the non-certified positions, simply because we'll be hiring those probably over the summer. You know, folks aren't looking for a job now in those, in those capacities. So to give you certified numbers, that would include social workers, case managers, academic counselors, teachers. We had a total of seven positions that we posted that were brand new to us. We've filled five of those seven. We're having a Dickens of a time with one of our MLL fills, but we're working hard on that one. That pool's always a little bit of a, a smaller pool of candidates. And we still have remaining a speech-language pathologist. So we're doing very good at filling those. Our principals hit the ground running. They had folks in interviewing. They, they really did a nice job of filling those, but also we have some teachers, as you'll see on the personnel report each month, folks that leave us and go to, to get jobs elsewhere. We have some internal shuffling that happens that creates additional vacancies. So they're doing a really great job of filling all those vacancies, but I wanted to bring those numbers back to you because you'd asked that question. MPC, I know Ms. Conquest, you mentioned about our kindergarteners and, and how our students are coming in. We're seeing an influx of summer evaluations. So those students that are coming directly to us, and Dr. Stab is shaking her head. Traditionally, we have maybe four to six summer evaluations that are performed. This year, we already have seventeen that are scheduled, so quite an increase there. We don't have a lot of capacity left in our classrooms because those, those classes are filled. So I think we have six seats that will be open at the end of the school year, and we have seventeen evaluations. So speaking with Dr. Miller, Dr. Stab, Dr. Mann, what we, it's crazy. What we are recommending, what I'm bringing to you, is to increase our FTE for our teacher at the, the EC level. We increased by a point five, if you remember. We came to you a few months ago and said, our numbers have increased. We need to add a half a teacher. We're, we're gonna add a half to that half to make a full. And then as a result of that, we also are going to increase, we have an increased need for our speech-language services. So we're gonna increase plus one FTE in speech language and also an aid then to assist in that classroom. So we feel like that will really allow us to hit the ground running in August servicing the number of students that we see coming to us already. Like I said, seventeen evaluations this summer. We feel like we'll, we'll be able to offer better services to our community by increasing the staffing that we have.
So I was just gonna add, remember that you don't, you take action when you hire them.
Yeah.
So if you have thoughts or like feedback to where you want us to slow the rolls, please let me or Ms. Conquest know, and you know, we'll bring this back for further discussion. But they, those positions were already built into the budget that Mrs. Robinson just presented. I almost pointed it out at the time, but I didn't wanna, I knew she had a speech prepared, yeah.
Yes, no, thank you. No, but we definitely, Mary worked into the budget that we can cover those expenses, both the, the salaries and the benefits. But we just didn't feel right knowing that we only had six seats and we were doing seventeen evaluations this summer. We would assume some of those students would qualify. It just really wasn't gonna, you know, be meeting the needs of our community, so. And also those are positions that are difficult to fill. So the sooner we can get those out there and get those published for, as vacancies, the better off we'll be finding good candidates.
Of those seventeen, are those the kids that have already turned three? Like, so that doesn't even count?
So it's a combination, yep, it's a combination of students that are coming from early intervention that will turn three over the summer or in August or early September. And then there are also students that are either three, four, or five already, or have come, they're probably three or four actually, if they're coming to screenings already. They've come to screenings this spring, and they need to be evaluated prior to the start of the school year. So if they do need services, we can start the school year off with those services.
And then we have to account for the kids that will be turning three?
Yes, throughout, yes. So the, the picture that we have right now, so the students that we have right now would be any student that is turning three prior to the middle of September for this school year that we already know about through early intervention. Now, I'm not gonna say that early intervention doesn't sometimes throw us a curveball where maybe a family just moved into our district and they were receiving services other, in another district. And then we're like, oh, now we get to evaluate them and place them. So sometimes that does happen. Or sometimes a family will take a child to early intervention right before they turn three, so then they come automatically to the school district.
I think it's also worth discussing, we are reaching capacity space-wise downstairs. So the real conversation with Dr. Miller was how, okay, great, we'll, we'll add these staff. Where are you gonna put them? So she's gonna have to do some internal shuffling downstairs as well to, and she's got a plan in place. But you know, that's a real constraint as well that we have to consider, so.
Mrs. Massey, bus drivers? Are we looking, are we still struggling to find drivers?
So I will come to you next month with a plan that we've been working on. Ms. Robinson, myself, we've been talking to the high school. You know, it's a tricky balance, right? Like, we have a partnership with them through the, the department, or the transportation department, where some of the drivers are one-eleven, some are two-oh-one. So when we come up with a plan as far as incentivizing, you know, rewarding for CDLs, things like that, we wanna make sure that we're doing so in a partnership with the high school so that we're not undercutting one another. So that's always a concern and a focus of ours, and we're still in those negotiations a little bit, working with them. So we'll be, again, coming to you next month with some of those ideas that we have to bolster our numbers in the transportation department. We've had a couple that have been added, a couple drivers, you know, new folks coming in, but we also then will lose somebody for, you know, a variety of reasons. So that's been a battle this year, continues to be a battle. If anybody wants to be a bus driver, let us know. We'd be more than happy to help you out. But yeah, I'll be coming at you next month with a little more of an idea of how we are hoping to incentivize more people to join the ranks of the bus barn.
And what about substitute teachers? I know three or four years ago, we raised, you know, to be competitive, are we doing? I haven't heard anything on subteachers, so are we, are we doing good with?
Still a struggle. We, we were competitive, and then some of our area schools really increased their rates in the middle of the year. We are about to negotiate a, a contract with our MESP support staff as well. So looking at all the pieces of the puzzle, trying to attract and incentivize people to come to us, but keep things, you know, reasonable as well, working with Mary to make sure budgeting-wise, you know, we're being responsible. That'll be a part of, of next month as well that I, I bring to you guys. So thank you for the, setting the table for me. Couple of other things I wanted to mention, technology-wise, this is just gonna be a, a little bit of an internal adjustment for organizational clarity. What I mean by that is, back in March, you guys approved a position for an information systems specialist. We currently have an information systems specialist, and that person, we're gonna toggle her title to information systems manager, simply because she has a, a great skill set within the district. This person, she'll be like a, a level two. This person coming in would be more of like a level one support, you know, doing some of the triage. So it, it just organizes our, and Erin's shaking his head over there. It organizes our tech department in a way that Erin's able to better utilize people. Internally, it makes more sense that, you know, level one concerns would go to this person, and while the, the manager is working on more of the district reports and state reporting and things of that nature. So it's just an internal clarification of title. And then.
Open position though.
Yes, sir, we'll post that, yep. That's another one of those non-certified that we'll post as soon as the school year's over, so. One of the other things, I know, I think it was Mr. Chamberberg, you mentioned the safety trainings for our, our SSO gentleman that spoke, Mr. Lustig. We do have a scheduled training August seventh. So Erin talked about Crisis Go, and he talked about Rival Five. There's a program called I Love You Guys that we're gonna be really diving into with our SSO team and our administrators, and then ultimately our teachers and everybody. That training will be August seventh, and that's, you, you get all these great tools, Crisis Go, Rival Five. They have to have the same terminology, and we have to all have common understanding of what that terminology means in this I Love You Guys program that we are gonna train everyone on and, and kind of incorporate into our emergency planning. Will be an all-day training for our staff. We're gonna invite in some of the local emergency services folks as well, the high school. Mr. Lustig is, is organizing this for us. But it will, all of the efforts that Erin's putting forward dovetail nicely with one another to create a really all-inclusive, you know, kind of package of safety. So that's one of the trainings that we do have scheduled. And then we'll have another schedule that Dr., another safety training that Dr. Mann sets up for our emergency plan update, that we do that over the summer with all the admin, so, just to speak to your point there. Otherwise, any questions for me? Right? Perfect, thank you guys.
Dr. Cesarek, do you have anything else for the board tonight? Mr. Souza? Mrs. Pelnarch, do you have anything? Welcome to the board meeting, Mrs. Pelnarch. Dr. Stab.
All right, I just have a few things. So the first is going to be a thank you to the community partners that have partnered with our Manuka Community Partnership Program. They were there for not only one or two sessions, but some of them, six sessions, and then some of them came back as spring partners when they were already fall partners. So all of these community partners that you see on here came to our programs at no cost to us at all. Sometimes if there were supplies, we would provide the supplies, but they came and dedicated their time to help spread just knowledge about what's available in our community to our students. So we wanted to publicly say thank you to all of these partners. We are also following up and sending them each a certificate to do a thank you that they can display. But this gave our students such a great wealth of knowledge about what's available in our local community. And some of these were things that I didn't even know existed, so I was excited to see them. And it was really fun to get to see the students interact with a lot of the different programs. The one time I walked in when they were doing the drama club, or the drama activity, and like they were doing an improv and they incorporated me into it, which I was not prepared, but it was a lot of fun. So it was really cool to see our students get to interact with so many different people from around our community. So again, thank you to all of these partners. A couple of other things that I wanted to bring up, the shout-out actually. Our Morris Hospital is partnering with our athletic department and our nursing department to do a sports physical clinic on June ninth, so that's something that we would like our families to sign up for. We wanna make sure that we get students into that spaces limited, but we will have both our athletic department and our nursing department are putting, are collaborating with Morris Hospital for that. And then I also wanted to give a huge shout-out to our multilingual department that the students take an access test at the end of each year, and that measures the student's language proficiency. So how well are they speaking, writing, and, and reading English language? And through that testing, that helps us determine if students can exit the multilingual program because their, their English language proficiency is at a good level, where we feel that they are well-versed in English and can be successful in the school environment without additional supports. And this year is one of our highest years of students exiting. We had fourteen students exit the program. So they were doing some celebrations through our bilingual parent advisory committee and at the building levels, but we also wanted to give a shout-out to those students, as well as our multilingual program that has worked so hard with those students. Couple of other things that I just want to look forward to for summer. We do still have our summer program enrollment is online, and if you haven't checked out that webpage on our website, it has some really great programs that not only we are offering here in Manuka, but that other community programs. So maybe a parent isn't interested in our program, or maybe they are, but they wanna do something else. They can access all of this on our website, and thank you to Mr. Souza and his team for helping us collaborate on all of that. Erin, I think it's if you go to Parents, and then you go all the way down, yep, Summer. So you can see our different summer camps, so enrollment for our kindergarten through fourth grade, and then the fifth through eighth grade enrichment programs, that is open through the end of this week. And then our Bridge, our Summer Bridge program, which Dr. Mann was speaking about earlier, that is the programs that are helping you get ready for the next grade level. Though that enrollment is open through June thirtieth. So we wanna have as many kids participate in our programs as possible, so parents, if you guys are interested, please sign up. Like I said, for the programs that are occurring in June, that will be open through the end of this week. And then the Summer Bridge program is open through the end of June. And then just as a, also an outlook to our summer, we are offering several different professional development options for our staff this summer. So we continue our partnership with the University of St. Francis to continue to offer college courses. We'll also have our USF cohort for the ESL endorsement, which is English as a Second Language. And then we'll offer some workshops here in district, and then we'll also have several book studies that our instructional coaches are hosting. So we're very excited about what the summer looks like here to continue best practices for our students, as well as continuing knowledge for our adults as well. Any questions for me? All right, thank you.
All right, just a few items for me. First, we briefly talked about EBF and that the legislature says they're going to be adjourning this week. Again, in Springfield, we never really know. So far, no bills have really been passed that cause a great detriment to, to schools that we have seen. There's a couple of strange ones out there that wouldn't have any immediate impact on, on, on our district here in Manuka. The biggest thing is the budget, and again, everybody seems to think, and, and like all of the discussion is that the three hundred and fifty million dollars of new money for the evidence-based funding is the floor. Like, it, it's almost guaranteed in the budget. And then there's talks, could it go more? And then people don't wanna set the expectation that it could be more every year, because sometimes budget forecasts go up and down. But everything is looking very positive, that there will be yet another three hundred and fifty million dollars put into that formula. And it's been very beneficial to, to our budgets and our programming here, so fingers crossed. They have until, well, I mean, there's no, we've seen years where they haven't adjourned until August or whatever, but the politics of Springfield is that after May thirty-first, it takes a three-fifths, three-fifths vote to pass something rather than a simple majority, so most people are predicting that they will move something before the end of the month. So we will see. Second, thank you for all of the schools, for all of their efforts to celebrate our teachers and our staff last week. It was Teacher Appreciation Week, and we appreciate all of our staff. That just happened to be a national week where teachers get the most love. I know Wednesday was School Nurses Day as well. But I just, it's thank you to the schools, the admin teams, and the PTOs for everything that they do to make the teachers feel, you know, respected and supported during that week. It's a, it's, it's just a great community effort to do that, so thank you to everybody. Next, the board may remember that at some point in the fall, or maybe it was August, we accepted a donation from Costco of backpacks with a couple of supplies in them to give out to, to low-income students. We never came near to finding enough students to distribute those two, and we've just had two hundred and fifty of those backpacks in storage downstairs. I came into contact with somebody from the Oswego District that is trying to start a food backpack program, similar to what we do with the Shanahan Rotary Club. And they said, all we need are the backpacks, and light bulb went off. And so we actually donated a hundred of our leftover backpacks to the community outreach coordinator, Michelle Early from Oswego, but she does, they, she works primarily with the Northern Illinois Food Pantry. So we have contributed a hundred backpacks to help, you know, help them share, you know, food to the needy up in Kendall County. So wanted the board to be aware of that. And again, thank you to Costco for the generous donation in the first place, but we've continued to spread the love with its intent. Finally.
Excuse me, Dr. Mann, real quick, so we gave away a hundred and fifty then?
One hundred backpacks. We still have a hundred and fifty.
Oh, okay, I thought we already gave a hundred and fifty to our students.
We got more than that, so yeah, we had, we had way more than that donated to us. This is just what we had left that we've never been able to. This is just what we had left that we've never been able to distribute.
Great.
Yeah. Second, we are coming to the end of our 2022-2023 school year. And first, want to congratulate our retirees. We have Mr. Razakowski from Jones Elementary, media teacher. I believe he's over 35 years with us in the district. I think he got his 35-year last year. If I got that wrong, I'm terribly sorry, Mr. Razakowski, but congratulations to him. Mrs. Christie McGrath from MIS is retiring. Ms. Patty Kosek from Menucha Elementary is retiring. And Popick? Popeck, thank you. I said that wrong. Is Nancy Popeck, right? So congratulations to our retirees for, you know, concluding a wonderful career and thank you for your, your service here in Menucha 201. Moving on, thanks to all of our students and congratulations for just about completing a, the 2022-23 school year. We look forward to seeing you in the fall. And most importantly, congratulations to the families and the graduates of Menucha Junior High School. So the board is invited to be a part of our graduation ceremony next Tuesday. Ceremonies are, Mr. Finkels, I'm forgetting, 5:30 and 7:30. We will have parking passes, I believe, for the board. But we, you know, you should probably consider getting there 4:45 to 5 o'clock 'cause there, there's always a crowd to get in, but you won't have to fight for parking. There is a designated parking area for you. So we always need people to help pass out the diplomas and it's really just a wonderful capstone event of their careers with us at Menucha Community Consolidated District 201. So hope everyone can make it there. And that is all I have for this evening. We do have closed session to discuss collective bargaining and for the first time in a while, there is expected to be action after closed session.
Any other questions or comments for the regular meeting? If not, I need a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.